Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the state of our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust best against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The boundless kingdom have power and glory forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Has the public comment machine made it all completely around? Okay, do we have anybody who would like to make public comments? Yeah, anybody?
Okay, on public comments, Wayne Jordan. Go ahead. Yeah, that's Jordan though. On the public comments, I don't get it, but you can see that we can't respond to whatever you say.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I just wanted to say, I called y'all and the problem I'm having is, and I'm sure a lot of everybody's having the same problem, is dogs and cats. We can't walk up and down our road without carrying clubs, golf clubs, people are getting attacked all the time. A bunch of us has put up fences to keep them out. They're digging underneath their fences, costing us money to keep, to put up the fence, and then you're paying, and then we have to pay more taxes because it's an upgrade to our property. And we're just not, and they just get in our trash and nobody says it around there. It's just getting to be bad. And it wasn't so bad at first, but now it's even gotten worse. And we called police, they come out, they don't do anything. We need to get something resolved on this problem. It's just getting where it's not safe anymore. Thank you.
Kevin Langdon, number three. Morning. My concern is about the certificate of obligation and it's about the fact that we passed it by only eleven people. And in that concern is being so close a vote and with such a poor turnout, wouldn't it be wise to ask for, or you ask for a recount to assure the voters that the, everything is according to oil? I'm real concerned about it because that's a lot of money to be passed by eleven people. That's it. Okay, item three certificate of completion.
I have some here.
The Edge Coalition certified that Nicky Store or Wilson County Public Library has completed two-hour Edge Initiative Course advocacy, signed by Barbara McCallister, executive director of the Public Library Association. And also by the Edge Coalition certified that Nicky Store or Wilson County Public Library has completed ninety minutes of Edge Initiative Course Technology Management. The first one was advocacy and then there was one on library leadership. And then there's one State Library and Archives Commission Certificate of Course Completion that is to certify that Nicky Store has completed the course, Small Library Management Technology for the Small Public Library, November seventh, two thousand thirteen. As the Library Development and Networking Division Director and Interim Director of the Library and Library, graduate from Stor. Item four is approved bond on Heather D. Hanson and Argy Garcia.
No question, Mr. Gammel, second. Mr. White, I'm prepared.
Item six, public hearing, courthouse. Item five, extension activity report handed out. Item six is public hearing, courthouse annex one, two, three, updated comments and questions. Anyone having comments or questions on the annexes in annex three? If not, we leave on to item. By the way, that is a public hearing, so if anyone in the courtroom is not just in this court and on item six is roughly. Item seven, consider and take action on an order canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the November fifth, two thousand thirteen certificate of obligation, amendmentless election.
Would like to go with Judge, would you go ahead and skip that argument and put it at the end?
Okay.
Would that be okay with you all? And then get tabled all the way to the end, please.
Item eight, Mary Wiley, Commissioner precinct board is just an approved employee health insurance.
Our insurance committee met with our new group, IPS, and reviewed a palette of coverage. And we unanimously supported option two for healthcare, which is a discount compared to what it was that we had last year, but at the same time improved coverage across the board. The premium for that is six ninety-one twenty-eight. And so, as the chairman of that committee, I make a motion that we accept it.
Motion to second.
My second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
All right. Secondly, Judge, in addition to that, the IPS group went through and analyzed other areas of insurance. And if we add as optional, paid by the employee if they want, vision and dental from Humana, which had better coverage, then we get an additional four thousand dollar discount. And the committee would like to recommend we do that, but along with that, for thirty-four hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents annually, we're getting a four thousand dollar discount, thirty-four hundred dollars, we can provide through Humana a ten thousand dollar, no questions asked, life insurance policy for all employees. And if we do that, then employees at their option and their expense can upgrade their life insurance policy should they wish, also no questions asked. So, the committee would like to recommend both of those items be approved by the court.
Can you tell us how much the savings we did on that insurance, on the private last day?
Yeah, what we're paying this year is six ninety-one twenty-eight. And the policy that we had last year was, yeah, seven twenty, seven twenty-seven fifty-eight. So, we're going from seven twenty-eight to six ninety-one. And we were, as you will recall, the insurance policy that we did last year was, as it turns out, a people attempt to address both ends of what we had from the sheriff's department standpoint. Their representative was trying to have a policy that, so their guys would go to the doctor. The average age, as you know, of the county is in the fifties. And so, we were trying to also have a policy that would address those individuals. And as it turned out, the policy didn't exactly do either one. The new policy, while not the same caliber of the policy we had years ago, is very much in that same vein. And so, it addresses both ends. And that's why the folks from the sheriff's department, the county, the auditor was on that, the county treasurer, and Judge Quinney's assistant, all unanimously approve.
Thousand dollars? It goes a thousand dollars?
Yes.
Oh, that's over to two thousand dollars.
Two thousand. Twenty-dollar copay, three hundred and forty dollars.
What is it, copay?
Twenty. I have it here if you want to look at all of it.
Yes, I will read that and then all of the ones that y'all picked up that day and then send back to the office.
Yeah, that's all good. Hey, Jan has the, she'll have a copy of it.
And then you can put it in my spreadsheet.
Yeah, well, this is my copy.
Jan, do you have?
Jan, do you have a copy of this you could give her?
Because I'll need that too, my computer.
Yeah. You do, okay, yeah, okay.
Before we, you want the total dollar amount savings? Around one hundred and forty-five thousand. Is the total dollar savings amount? Did we go over that?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Again, the life insurance and adding them, then I'd like to make a motion that we do that as well. I'll second that.
All there?
All right.
Item nine is just take action on county information, precincts, state service, agreed.
Judge, could I comment on that?
Yes, ma'am, please.
The county attorney's offices reviewed the agreement and we are recommending, I think, five changes, four of which are small and one of which is not small. We've prepared a letter to the company that we'd like to send, asking them to set those few changes.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
What are the changes?
There are four changes where we are asking that they have to notify us if they take certain actions. For instance, the contract reads that they could remove content from our webpage without notifying us. So, we want to put in that they have to notify us prior to removing anything from our webpage. So, there are four items of that kind where we're asking for prior notice. The big change is they are, despite the fact that they are from TAC, they're asking us to indemnify them as if we were a private company and not a county. So, we want them to remove that indemnification. I really don't think they'll have any.
Well, we'll table that until you get a response back.
That's fine, I have the letter ready to mail today.
Okay, well, we'll just table that, put it back on.
Put it back on, dear Janet.
Item ten is just take action, council, and we're scheduling the regular commission for giving a monkey December twenty-third, two thousand thirteen. In the past, I think we had this council, please.
I think last year we actually had a meeting at some point in time.
I guess the only question would be if we have bills that we need to get through the year. Just we need to have a big meeting somewhere just from the standpoint.
Yeah, I think that was the issue last year, there was some like credit card bills and things like that that needed to be paid. And so, we went ahead and I believe had a meeting like on the twenty-eighth or something.
Y'all want to, council has now had anyone that has a need to contact the city and say that a date to go ahead and set one at that time, we don't know what's going on.
Probably, my guess is, that's just my guess, that since the first court is so early, it's the ninth that we're probably going to need to do, to do something. And I don't know, just from the standpoint of the way the holidays fall this year, having someone there to process the information could be an issue. When you look at the calendar, do you see a day that would make sense? Or should we just try to pack it all into the ninth and carry it over to?
Well, we have, what, three days for Christmas, established schedule?
Well, we've got, yeah, we've got these two days off, for sure, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth.
Which is a Tuesday and a Wednesday. And the thirtieth, which is a Monday? We don't have the thirtieth.
No, it's a regular workday.
I mean, that would probably be a reasonable day, and after thirtieth, I mean, it's a Monday. If people want to take off that Christmas.
Make motion, Monday, the thirtieth.
If not, maybe we can just cancel it.
What we could do is cancel it and then when we get close to December, on our record meeting on the ninth, we can make a determination as to whether to do it. So, I make the motion that we cancel it and then reduce on December the ninth, the need.
Motion to second, all in favor?
All right.
Item eleven, Rachel G. Level, safety and maintenance, County Road one oh one, multiple issues on driving speeds on the road, Cal One and Road, fourth condition. Which lady?
Hello, my name is Rachel Schamol, County Road one oh one. We've been having multiple issues out there. The first move out there was lucky if you didn't sell one person on the road or passed up. However, lately, we have had a lot of people move into temporary housing over there. And we've had lots of issues with speeding. It concerns me when I'm coming down a road at thirty miles per hour, which I didn't set the speed limit. However, I have people coming and coming down the road at sixty-five, seventy miles per hour and I'm almost going to get hit with my six-year-old daughter in the back of my car. That concerns me. I stop these people, I honk at them, I, you know, they'll pull over. I'll go back to them and I'll say, it's thirty miles per hour here, you know? There's signs up. The people who are here know it's not, you know, it's thirty-five, it's forty. My concern is that we need more signs, we need signs, you know? I know where they're coming from, I've made multiple calls to the sheriff's office every time I have an encounter with them. I've called multiple times and they've had an encounter with the cattle on there. These people are speeding so fast that when that cattle, those cattle are roaming over there, somebody's going to get hurt and they're going to get hurt bad. I also know that we're having issues with the road. I know they're actually working on that too. We have concern with the, the way that, as muddy as it gets, you know, during the rain and everything, you're slipping and you're sliding. I can't pull out of my driveway area and make a right-hand turn and get enough traction to even move further up the road because it's so muddy. So, I have lots of concerns. I mean, I've tried to call, especially concerns with the speeding, especially concerns with the cattle. You know, I've taken, you know, I spoke to an officer, officer called me back and told me, can't do anything about it unless we can't catch them in the act. You know, and I'm like, oh, I understand that, but obviously, nobody's out here. And I get the comment that, you know, we don't have enough officers at that time just to be in that area, which I also understand. But maybe a presence every now and then just to let them know too that someone's out there.
Thank you. Item twelve, Ruben L., fourteen, County Road three work, one forty-four.
Could I come forward, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a little thing that I made. Yeah, they're lying to you. This is a matter of rocks. They are driving our property with flat, ruined tires, punctured tires, brand-new tires. And these are the ones that I want y'all to buy for everybody to take hold of and see if y'all might proceed differently. Because I'm tired of those things sitting in our tires. Two of them are ruined tires plus flat tires, but here. And so, now I'll start my meeting. Anyway, thank y'all for letting me come before the council with this one agreement. I'm here to claim a call here, present in addition of County Road one forty-four, located directly across Highway ninety-seven, from Crossland Dairy Creamery. I know the precinct too is quite busy and they're basically stretched to an eighth or eighth string of violins. However, I would like to bring to view my claim, the owner of the house, a four-story residence. And as you know, I provided you the examples of the rock that is used on this road. And you will also observe that there are several sharp edges, each stone. And these rocks are taken from a railroad bed and not seen used in roads that are already on a bill with a normal four-line tires, as opposed to the off-road tires, church tires, travel. And most of the residents that live along this road drive, run cars, and not commercial, barely using trucks. How did you buy a piece of rocks used on your, if your road is here, it's your house? And if when the road is graded, it brings the sharp edges, stones, back to the center of the road to slice the tires once again. The grading also brings back the pieces of metal and railroad sprouts to once again assault the end of the tires. Okay, all right, here's one oh four. This is one oh four. And... This is one oh four. Let's see, one oh four. And this is the way it looks from the distance. Because all those rocks were crushed, the little gravel, and then put on these roads, which is a bad hand. This road used to be horrible, absolutely horrible. And this is how they fix it. And if that community can fix their roads where they can travel without killing their tires in their cars, then I, this is what the people on one boy's board as well. And of course, the surface is ruined and concrete over. And then it looks like we changed the pressure. Along, along Road one forty-four, there are eleven residents and one, two residents having at home daycare, other cars travel and not missing numerous non-residents who on the count of the long County Road one forty-four, which are taxpayers. Taxpayers and no oil, oil trucks travel this road. Now, here's one forty-four. And I know it's, this began a long time ago. But these are the rocks. These are the rocks. And this is how it looks when it's been graded. And these little rocks that you're looking at is what comes up and stabs our tires, ruins them, you can't fix them. And I've got a creek full of tires through the years since you've had these rocks on that road. But this is the twentieth century. We shouldn't have those shit like this. That's it. So, this is what I want something doing with that. And then I have a few more of these things here. Oh, the washboard. Now, there's a, you see that the washboard, the washboard effects, the stage, indeed. But anyway, as you go, here's your car, one gallon. That's another one. I mean, it's just terrible. And then we go into letters, I have a lot of letters here. Y'all like to read them from all the people that live out there. These people on the street. There is your letter. They're all begging. I told them, I'll go, I'll go, I'll be talking to them, but I know we can do something about it. We have to do something about it. And that's it, very well, I don't want to miss nothing else. And I thank y'all for that, all of it. Washboard, letters. You know, a number of years ago, my brother, Michael Swoboda, that worked for the light company, he was, had cancer very, very bad. And we lived down that, he lived right, right next to me down the one forty-four. And I had to call, I commissioned him about this little old bridge we got. Every time it rained, it was just flooded, flooded, we couldn't get in or couldn't get out, even if it's open. And my wife had to stay in town at nights after coming from work to get home. But anyway, I finally had to call, this is a state representative out there, and they could look at this little bridge. And he says, well, you know, I think they were saying that they would pay money to fix this bridge. You know, there was two of them. And one got fixed, this other one, money couldn't get, and the little bridge. And we are still having this flooded, flooded little bridge. And it has been, so far and day, the people came out and they cleaned out here and they made where the water would flow under it, it's going down into creeks. But it hasn't been touched now. We need this, this plane taken care of. I mean, we've got a bunch of old folks out there, we didn't have a, it would be in the net. And so, we need that bridge, something to do with it. Need to be cleaned out or something, but we're going to have rains here. But anyway, that's all I got to say and I thank y'all and I pray that the Lord bless y'all and God and breakfast and goodness, thank you, because you want that peace.
We need to give them.
Well, I want to give it. That was the whole purpose of it, it's very important. And I know, I know, Miss Shaw has a lot of territory to cover, so I'm not blaming him. But I think that he needs more money, he gives a little bit more service since we pay so much taxes out there. A lot of people pay high taxes. So, we can't... So we can't wait till we get our bonds money. And if we get the bonds money, we can't wait till all this other stuff gets fixed. Because we support Forestville.
Thank you very much. Item 13, Vernon Patel. County Auditor, Budget Governor here in county, 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 thirteen.
Well, as I was reviewing the budget for the current year, I found an error in there that I'd like to correct. It was under the county attorney's account on for that data and I should have put in nine thousand. And somehow it didn't get in there, I added three, thirty-five hundred. So I have about a fifty-five hundred dollar correction to make and I'd like y'all to prove that. What I plan on doing is, we do have an account for records management that has funds that we probably will not use to fund our, uh, transfer.
Okay. Got it. Item 14, Nick Chisholm, we'll send down a librarian update on library service.
I have a few things I'd like to let you guys know that are happening with the library. The reason I took those continuing education credits is the library has agreed to participate in something called the Edge Initiative, which is funded by the building Melinda Meads Foundation. They're looking to create benchmarks for public libraries across the nation. And they have some kind of standard, just so the library, they asked us to participate. We scored real low on the library's connection to the community. So the state library has helped me to lock the plan of action that we're changing our website to include government totally, how to find a job, how to do residency, things like that, so there will be changes in the county's website in the future. The other other days, they asked me to take, bring classes on advisory. They told me to change my statements to, "Everything's going fine," to the little elevator statement of what the library needs, that government is providing a parking lot, a telemedicine, the stuff we need.
You haven't been doing that?
No, I haven't been doing that.
Oh, you have.
I didn't say everything's fine. And then I did a really long one on digitality, what's coming in the future, which is why I took the one offered by the state on how to, how to manage your networks. How to keep your computers up and running and things like that. So I just want to make you aware that the Edge Initiative is underway. The next one I wanted to talk about is Mrs. Peck has told me that she has plans to retire in April. And upon hearing that Stockdale is needing some assistance, I would like to know if we could offer them a part-time degree librarian paid by the county to keep the Stockdale Public Library open on a regular set schedule.
As a replacement for...
There is no one there right now, it's all run by volunteers. And if they can't find a volunteer, the doors aren't open.
Are you gonna use the funds from Mrs. Peck?
Mm-hmm, that's what we'd like to do. And then her duties for the library will be picked up by other staff members and we could possibly compensate them for their extra duties. I've talked to the Stockdale Advisory Board, they are very happy. One of the members of the advisory board is also on their city council, he said that is fine. If we do this, I think our next step would be some type of official memorandum of understanding. This is what the county does, this is what the city of Stockdale agrees to do. I'm also very concerned that as the county grows, right now, we are the only accredited public library in the county. Once we reach fifty thousand and one, the state would like us to have two degree MLS people on staff. So this is the one way to stop this before it happens. Because once Stockdale could become accredited, then our portion of the population could be reduced. And we would all work together with this one type of agreement.
Is this something that ultimately, because I know you have a substate in Palonia.
We just have the kiosk.
Is this something that would ultimately lead up to hope as well, something like what you're experimenting with in Stockdale?
And we've had a request for Poe to put in one of those little free libraries, it looks like the baby mailbox, that people can put a paperback exchange. So I'm trying to find a partner that can help us build one like that. In the future, with this, with as busy as the kiosks are, we're checking out about two hundred items a month. Down the road, maybe three to five years, I could see like a satellite, small office or branch library eventually, not, not right now. And so I guess I need...
I need to discuss it with him, say?
Would you say? Yes.
And she, she something she wants to do? I know she lives like north of Forestville.
She's been, it came to me and told me that she had been investigating when the visa was time to retire. So they told her it's the last day of her fourth month, so that would be her role.
By me, the, the men, three, assigned to Stockdale, that portion of.
Just her salary, not her personal, but she said she's fine.
What, they're hiring a different person?
She's retiring.
Oh, okay. You're not coming back the immediate time you come?
No.
So in May or June, somewhere, okay. And so you're gonna use the budgeted funds for her to fund a person for that?
Right. The person that retired has to have the master of the library's clients to head off to the state requirement of to the county. All the county's payroll is not like that. They have to, they have to have a two-degree equal to county's payroll.
Does that wouldn't affect y'all any for having that person work?
Uh-uh. The person, Mrs. Peck's duty, current duty would be picked up by this other staff. And we could, if we didn't get a hundred percent of Mrs. Peck's salary, a beginning library manager just out of school, you're looking at twenty-five thousand. And then the leftover from Mrs. Peck's position, since she has been here for so long, could go to the people who have taken actually extra.
Also, you're gonna have to hire another one or something? When you replace this past?
We're not gonna be replacing her, she's gonna send her, send that person to Stockdale.
But then you're gonna be short in the library.
We will be okay. We'll be fine.
I think, before we get to that, you need to put a plan together as to exactly what all it entails, the percentage of it, and that way we can budget it for the next, next budget.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if I can proceed with the memorandum of understanding, kind of need help with that county attorney's office to...
Well, we'll have to have something before we begin.
Okay. Can I at least say, if I get it, if I'm going in the right direction, yes, you'd like me to continue, everybody?
Well, I think it's kind of down to the cost. If, if, from my perspective, if we can do it within the framework of the budget, then I think it is an interesting idea. Because when we, when we talked about the library within the guidelines of what it is that we're doing, the only criticism that I got came from Stockdale and from Polk in that it, you know, it's kind of difficult for them, for Stockdale to get over here maybe more slowly than Polk's. And so if we're coming out with sort of a satellite system that ties it all back together, then I'm all for that. But I'm with the judge, I think we need to see a plan. But I think if you work it well with Polk.
Okay. Then I have drafted like these are the items that the county, and this is what I would like to... Next, final list. We have contacted the Commonwealth Hospital to see how the library, this partnership is in. We're thinking that our friend in the library would like to buy one of those little turnstiles that you can put in, paperback books for the people who are sitting in the emergency room. Instead of sitting there listening to your iPod or whatever, you could actually pick up a book and start reading. Um, we've had donations of several of the romance and western novels that I think would be perfect. We wouldn't expect these to come back from the library, I know that the market's coming out. And we've also just had a large donation to the... Harlequin romance event that we're gonna add what we can to ours that we'd like to also share.
Muikavayente. Muikavayente.
Okay. I know with that. I just want to let you know that that's something that if you're talking about, we should see that turnstile, I think our friends in the library are going to be purchasing that and putting the other things in there. The other one, yeah, last, I have two more to go. Forestville Independent School District is doing a challenge where they think, they said they want to speeden for FISD to read like eight million minutes. So the library is partnering with them. The school is giving, or each school is giving child, boy and girl who reads the most a single. And we are going as staff, with us that are doing Thursday, to set them all up with library cards and to show them how to use the overdrive to download the books that will go to the handles. So just want to let you know that we're also partnering with this school. And one more. When I ran last month's statistics, I thought everybody would like to know that our computer system can tell us the value that the library has for the county. So instead of buying the books when you check them out, the library has saved this county residents in just a month, eighty-six thousand dollars. Just because the items you've checked out for us. So just let you know we have a huge value to save.
How does that work? That sounds good.
It is, instead of you buying a new James Patterson book, if you were to read it from the library, the computer keeps a record of everything that's checked out as far as the monetary value of that book and totals it up. So therefore, everybody in the county that's used the library does not have to spend eighty-six thousand dollars because you've checked out and borrowed the item.
That's kind of like if I walk home, instead of taking the car, I save the amount of that car's cost.
If you don't do that, I'll drive you home with your car.
So you have any questions to me, that's all.
I think you've been a real blessing to the library since you came along.
We're trying. Our goal this year is to see how far we've been spread from libraries to be assisted out of the county. It'll be slow at first, but I'm sure once we get to the ground, maybe just...
The communication and the understanding of what you're doing is vastly improved. Item 15, Brady Watson, does take action on prepaid legal services for employees identified.
This is our, I think, very much for... Uh, it's just a symbol that we have on Legal Shield, a symbol.
Oh, I see.
Part of the hotel. Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Brady Watson, I live in Legal Shield, and I'm an independent associate for Legal Shield. And what we do is prepaid services for your employees. The national average for attorneys today is two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. The average employee, for the average employee, that's a luxury that they cannot afford. Fifty-seven million American employees will have some sort of legal issue this year, be it from the trivial to the traumatic. Sixty-six percent of those employees will miss at least one day of work to deal with those legal issues. An employee who is not at work would cost you Wilson County money. Legal Shield provides a way to help keep your employees working for you instead of handling their personal issues while at work. The benefits of having employees covered by Legal Shield are reduced absenteeism, increased productivity because they are at work, and then of course decreased employee stress. And that's a, that's a big thing nowadays. The plan includes advice on unlimited topics, be it personal or business. The attorney will write a letter or make a phone call to your behalf. They'll review documents up to ten pages, and they'll do that several times a year. Motor vehicle services. We all get speeding tickets, unfortunately, and when we get a speeding ticket, our auto rates go up. And so our Legal Shield attorneys will help reduce that or help at least keep your premiums low by helping to take care of the speeding ticket. We do IRS audit services as well. And with the new Affordable Healthcare Act, this could possibly become one of the most important features of this product. And it wasn't intended that way, but it's, it looks like that's going to be a very big deal. Now, the most important thing that I think that we do with this plan is we know that eight in ten people do not have a will today. And our membership will give them a will and it will be, review it and update it on a yearly basis. Also provided is a living will as well as a healthcare power of protection. The, if a member's name is a defendant or respondent and covered civil or job-related criminal action, Legal Shield will provide assistance by providing sixty hours of trial time per year. And we'll add sixty hours of trial time for the first five years, so they'll have a total of five, I'm out, three hundred out of five years. We'll legally provide coverage for legal situations that are not covered under the plan. And then what they do is they, we give them a twenty-five percent discount for those situations that they have. Let me add one thing that's kind of important. The employees are not allowed to use the service against the county. So they can't get the service and then, and then sue the county using the Legal Shield attorney. There's an amendment that's added that for each one of them. Now, in addition, we also offer a service called Identity Shield. Now, this service can be called, can be used in conjunction with this or it can be a standalone product. And identity theft has been the number one crime in America for the past thirteen years and it's not gonna get any better. What we do is we give an up-to-date credit report. We give you a detailed analysis of your personal credit score and we also give you continuous credit monitoring. Now, to be honest with you, most banks and most credit card companies do the same thing, they do those things. But what we do, we do one thing more than what they do. And that is we will give you a theft, oh, identity theft consultation and restoration. The restoration part is the most important part of that. Because we, you want to be able to get back to the way you were. I'll give you an example. And I just picked up this article just the other day, ABC News says this fisherman's wallet was, a fisherman reels in a wallet that was stolen three years ago. Now, and I'm gonna read one, one sentence out of this. "The thief, who Gomez, since located and pressed charges against, maxed out all of his credit cards, ruined his credit, and to this day, he's still trying to fix his identity." So that's a very important thing to have, is have identity shield. Let's see here. So the, the restoration part is what I'm, I'm most pleased with when I talked about this, this particular product. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Watson, I have been back to Dollar Store to upgrade my glasses. Would you read the fine print on the bottom there?
Uh, let me... This is on the identity theft part? I should, I can read that one out, but... Which one you talking about there?
Bottom of the fine print on the...
Exposure's legal remedy.
Okay. Uh, any stolen identity event where the victim is unwilling to have my, uh, it's fifty, sure. Unwilling to prosecute the person to the cause, the victim to suffer the fraud or its consequences. Dishonest acts, any dishonest criminal, malicious or fraudulent act if the member who suffered the fraud personally participated in, directed in, or had knowledge of such acts. Membership services do not cover any financial losses attributed to the stolen identity event, including, but not limited to, money stolen from a wallet. Unauthorized purchases of retail goods or services online by phone, mail, or direct. If either the victim has had knowledge of or responsibly should have knowledge of pre-existing... Theft or unauthorized, illegal use of business, any DPA or any other method of identifying identity activity. Identity theft services provided by Croll, those leading responsible, uh, uh... Identity theft services provided by CROL, and those reading responsible, uh, consulting, country with all's forty years' experience in security and risk mitigation. One thing too, CROL is, uh, full services is, if you were to go to work for the government, they would grant you through, through CROL, CROL would take care of, of finding out, uh, everything about you. Last one, you said we're smart and we're tied, Legal Shield represents this.
Anybody have any question, Paul? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Item sixteen, Dan Hortal, County Treasurer, mandatory open enrollment for all employees in health insurance and other employee benefits will be held on Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand thirteen, in the district's office meeting room in Annex Three, beginning at seven a.m.
Just for information only, uh, Judge, that's what the department does, and everybody will know that it's a mandatory health insurance meeting on that day. All employees must attend.
Did you determine what the seating capacity was? I know we were trying to figure that out the other day.
It's about thirty, forty.
And, and I know that we had discussed having all the precincts there at seven o'clock, so we don't really mix up our work today. And it, are, are we gonna have classes on the hour, or?
I've got to talk to the, uh, to the people at the, that are coming to see how long the session, one session will last before we, you know?
Book them.
Right.
So they need to book with you in advance, so you know who's coming?
Well, yes, we can. I'm gonna send out, I'm gonna work on that today, send schedule and, uh, uh, schedule when the people can come. My one concern is the sheriff's office, uh, being that we can't use the room over there, that they all have to come over to this annex here.
That'll be a challenge when sheriff, yeah.
I wish there were a way around that, Sheriff, if you have a room back there where we can, you know, so...
That break room, you know, that's about it, unless, I mean, if they're having court.